I'm sure you do.
It is seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Moving on to recognitions. Anybody from the board have anything?
I would like to recognize the Platteville Youth Basketball Team, the fifth grade boys. Team red got a chance to play in the state tournament in Madison over the weekend, and they won first place. So it was pretty exciting. So great program. Many of them fifth grade boys that are going to definitely be playing probably for the Platteville High School team someday soon. So really nice.
We hope so.
Kind of following up on that, the youth wrestling had their state tournament this last weekend also, and the co-op had two state champions. The first time that Platteville has ever had two state champions.
Great. Anybody else from the board?
Want to recognize actually fellow administrator Brad Brogley today. We had our ACT and pre-ACT secure today. Three hundred and fifty students successfully tested. So the logistical operation that is behind that is amazing. So I really appreciate the work that Brad put into that and all the high school staff that teamed up to get that done for our students today. It was a very successful day. So I just appreciate everybody's efforts, especially Brad. Also wanted to make sure the board is aware you are formally invited to participate in the class of 2024. We have a senior breakfast that's been a tradition for many years as well as the commencement ceremony. If you can RSVP to Lynn, if you're able to attend those events, it would be much appreciated.
Jim? I would like to remind everybody, April 2nd, it's an election day. On our ballot, we have four board positions up for election. Significant decision for our school district. And we also have the operating referendum. So I, once again, I encourage everybody to vote with a friend and make sure you become informed prior to voting.
Thanks. Move on to opportunity for public input. Do we have anybody? No. Then we'll move on to information and discussion items. Facilities improvement update.
So I will, I'll bring up this photo, and this is the 360, and I'll just talk as we go. All of our projects are still on schedule and still under budget. The, what we're looking at here is the addition onto the middle school.
Nice coming up.
And they say in two weeks, it'll be pretty close to looking like it's finished. So that, that's the drywall, the mud, the, the paint will be happening soon. The ceiling will be closed in soon. All these things happen soon. Over here, those are the bathrooms, and that was the, the original reason why we wanted to have this addition, to increase the toilet rooms in that seventh and eighth grade hallway. In the board packet, there are, there's another 360 view from a different angle in that room. Then there's the entrance of that same room, some Neil Wilkins photos that were taken a week ago, and then some additional Neil Wilkins photos that were taken today on the tour.
We'll move on to items in the consent agenda.
In our consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meeting on February 28th. We have the financial report of the past month. Total receipts for February, $4,365,544.86, or disbursement, $6,210,266.85, and all of the line items to follow. I would ask the board to also pull up that PMA, that monthly report. That is the money that's invested from our bonds, and it is tracking as we had anticipated. It's still about 1.4. for the month of March, the total, $18,889.92. The music boosters had a sizable donation, a mobile sound card. What this is going to allow us to do is when we have our field shows, and then also when we have, for example, the graduation ceremony that we're all invited to on May 17th, 7:00 PM at the activity complex, it will allow the sound from the bands to, to be captured and then really play well in the bleachers. And so you also take it for that event, you kind of think about, well, what else can we do? And then also when we, someday we want to host a field show competition. This will be a step in which the judges say, oh, you can now do it. And we also, a, a big donation from the Foreign Type Cheesemakers Association, and also Meyer and Construction. That's something that scoreboard at Neil Wilkins that I had alluded to in a previous update.
They gonna run power to it?
Yes. We had confirmed that it will be completely operational. Also in the consent agenda is the personnel to hire a full-time head school, high school head custodian. With Scott McCabe's retirement, we went through a hiring process, and we've selected Randy Knight for board approval. He is currently employed, so this will be, he's currently a para for us in the middle school. We have a couple of co-curricular hires for the spring season. And then we also have in the consent agenda, the resignation of a head boy swim coach.
So moved. Second. Motion by Kurt, second by Steve, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Looking for a motion and a second to adopt the agenda, please.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Betsy, to approve the items on the agenda. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Onto action items. First up, retirement of a Westview Elementary teacher.
Up for approval is the retirement of Brenda LaConte. She retires in good standing as an employee, and she'll be able to provide the retirement benefits for which she is eligible. Just a little note there, the effect of June 13th is because she also does summer school for us.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Betsy, second by Keisha, to approve the retirement of Brenda LaConte as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. On item B, retirement high school counselor.
Laura Melby has submitted her letter of retirement, and she will be provided the retirement benefits for which she is eligible, and she's also an employee in good standing.
So moved. Motion by Steve, second by Ben, to approve the retirement of Laura Melby as high school counselor as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Retirement food service worker.
We have Twyla who has submitted her retirement, and she is eligible for the retirement benefits, and she's also an employee in good standing for the district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Keisha, to approve Willa Ziden's retirement as high school food service worker as presented. Any questions or comments on that?
I do like the comment in her retirement statement about the National Health College pictures.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resignation in the middle school.
Recommendation to approve the resignation of Megan Klein, effective March 8th.
So moved. Second. Motion by Matt, second by Steve, to approve the resignation of Megan Klein as fifth grade special education teacher as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resignation part-time social worker.
Taylor Sorrentino has submitted her letter of resignation effective the end of the school year. Recommend to approve.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Keisha, second by Betsy, to approve the resignation of Taylor Sorrentino as part-time school social worker as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Fall '24 ECCP applications.
Annual event for our students to have a chance to take those early college credit programs. A reminder to the board, it's an impressive list, but not every student will be able to take all of those classes. They take more of a grouping, and if one fits their schedule and they're still interested, they grab that class.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben, to approve the Fall '24 ECCP applications as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Motion carries. Second and final reading.
Policies have been through the first reading, and they have not been altered since.
Move or approve? Second. Motion by Steve, second by Kurt, to approve the second and final reading of Policy 171.2, Policy 13, excuse me, 342.7 as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto the activities sponsorship.
So this is an item that has been in multiple committees leading up to this point, and I believe we have an actionable sponsorship packet. It started when we received the donation for the video scoreboard, and part of the idea was if we have this video scoreboard, we can then use that to help generate sponsorships, and then use those funds to help perpetuate and sustain the activity complex to keep it at the level that it's at. And we started going around looking at other schools, seeing what they did. We have taken this, and currently the policy community outreach committee has policy that would assist this coming to the full board at the next meeting. So that'll take two readings. The one change in this, and it, allow me to back up if I can. Each step along the way, we would get a draft, refine it. The final step was showing it to Boardman and Clark, our lawyers, and they have provided back those updated policies. One, one policy is just explaining what the sponsorship is, and then some expectations, rules to follow. The artifact would be the contractual agreement, and those are the two that are coming our way. In short, we have three different engagement levels at three different price points, and there was a, an addition from community outreach and policy in that this current sponsorship packet does not recognize the, the sponsorship boards that are in our south gymnasium. Those are through the Booster Club. So the proposal is to include those boards as part of the Hillman Pride and the Platteville Spirit. So it'd just be a new horizontal line, and we'll have a better term than what I'm stammering through as far as describing those boards. I'll work with the Booster Department, the Booster Club. And then that's an addition to this. But everything else, the concept is there. If this is approved, we can then start the process of, well, who would be interested? I have, there are nine different businesses that had contacted me, and I believe it was generated once we did the yearbook ads. We sold yearbook ads. We also mentioned, hey, there's this opportunity. So I have a list of nine businesses. Once this is approved, I will meet with them individually and really explain the ins and outs of this, and then make sure that their expectations are the same as what they are getting. And I would like this to start July 1, because that's when we have our fiscal year. That's when it begins. So I think this slots in nicely with a, a comfortable timeframe that we can then sell those sponsorships.
So are you selling all of the sponsorships, or do you have somebody else that eventually will be selling these on a regular basis?
Due to the monetary nature, I think that is a superintendent position only, one person being responsible for that.
Did we ever talk to the broadcast group about the live stream?
Yes. And they were good with what was proposed.
And if you have over, over the limit for sponsorship packets or what have you, if you, so say for instance, for the Hillman Pride, it's exclusive, exclusive to only four, but if you have six organizations that are vying for these sponsorship packets, I know they're, they're placed for fall, winter, and spring programs, but do you give an opportunity to the other organizations for the next fall, spring, and winter to, to purchase one of the packets?
And I think I'm following you here.
Okay.
The reason why the Hillman Pride can only be four right now is because when the video scoreboard was, was erected, there are four panels that are open for those four, and those are the premier ones. If we do have serious interest from more than four, I think then we have to problem solve and say, is there another, can you add more panels?
Add like?
And, and adjust that. But that's why that was set at four. And then when it comes to the Platteville Spirit with 10, it, it really is just an intelligent guess right now, if we'll have 10. And, and we wanted to make sure that there were different echelons, different levels of, that, that represent the money that people are using to sponsor. So that number 10, if there's more than 10, I think that would be an exciting issue to
A great problem to have.
So then who is implementing the sponsorship, the implementation of putting all the sponsors on the board? Is there somebody that will be doing that?
Yep, we are Director of Communications and Marketing.
And how much do you anticipate in revenue? And do you have specific items that it be allotted for, or?
Yep. Yeah, I should have mentioned that. So what our business administrator has done is he's created, it's Fund 46, and in that, there is going to be one category in which the sponsorships all go to. From that Fund 46, we can then use that, and this is part of the reason we're doing it, to then help sustain the quality of the activities complex and different, different things that go along with that. So when you need to upgrade that fund as we build it up, we're able to then, be great if it was self-sustaining, but we don't know that yet. But we would have a good chunk of that there to help with that.
I think the other important thing is, is that the donor, this is what she wanted for the school district, for it to be able to help sustain things for the future.
Yes, from the video board.
Right. So that was kind of the catalyst to everything, that donation. Motion. I'd be looking for a motion and a second. So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Kurt, second by Ben, to approve the Platteville Hillman Activities sponsorship as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Facility rental information packet.
Another item that we have been looking at through a variety of committees is we now, we have a new facility, so let's review how we rent out our facilities to our community and, and also for school use. And it also brought up another area of improvement, and that is the process of renting. So putting this all together, we have this facility rental information, and everything, same thing as before, July 1 is when we'd like this to become active. And in the background, we have all of the, the web interactivity designed and ready to go to where a person who's interested has to go through a series of questions, dropdown menus, and take care of all of that legwork, and it'll all be automated. And this seams in right with our, it's called our school is the program, and that's how we schedule all of our gymnasiums. Like tonight, the board meeting, this is scheduled, that this is secured, and everything. At 7:00 PM, they started playing pickleball in the gym. That is reserved. Now all of this gets fed into one system, so we won't have double bookings, and that's a nice improvement to have. And it cuts down a lot of the labor hours spent as opposed to taking phone calls and helping work with people through it. They can attempt this. Let's say it isn't successful, then we'll help. But really this, we have the new facility, we have this new rental program. It really came together, I think, very, very efficiently for future use. A big change, a lot of the language is the same, but we used to have two categories, of which you would be a renter of, but now we have three, a class one, a class two, and a class three. And those are explained up above.
So moved. Motion by Kurt, second by Colleen, to approve the facility rental information packet as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto security technology purchases.
So we have the, the total Phase 1 cost of $30,565.41. These are cameras, and then also the halo detectors that will serve our new spaces that we're building on. Cameras we get. The halo detectors, that is something that our district started using a year and a half or so ago, and primarily they're in bathrooms. And what they do is they detect, it could be smoke, it could be vaping, it could be loud noises, it could be hurtful language. They pick up on this, and it is programmed to then send it to our building principals, and they get an alert on their phone. For example, bathroom two has smoke. It seemed in with our camera system, and it starts to record. This has been an extremely valuable investment in deterring those types of activities in our school, but also reducing the time spent in trying to solve what happened. And I was on the record, and I said this in, in operations, when Ryan Kowalski was a board member, he brought one of the, he said, hey, should we think about this? And I said, they don't work. Gave it a year or so, they now work, and I was wrong, and they worked very well. It's something that we, it's standard issue now with our spaces. So this was part of the referendum planning, but because a camera does not have a long lifespan, the, the halos also, it's technology, so it expires quickly. We budgeted for that with our annual budget, these amounts. This isn't coming out of referendum, it's because they expire too quickly.
So moved. Motion by Kurt, second by Colleen, to approve these security and technology purchases as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Onto 2425 Employee Handbook.
Annual event in which we review our employee handbook, look and see if there's a way to improve it, and the way this process works is starting July 1, I have Lynn print off a paper copy of our employee handbook, and then as the year goes through, if we get ideas, someone brings it to me, I get it, I put a sticky note in there, and then once we get to February, I compile the list, and then we meet with staff, send this out beforehand. Staff looks at this, if they have ideas, they can share them with us. And it's been a nice practice that we started four years ago, and we're getting pretty good at it. And these aren't significant changes unless you're in one of these positions. So the first one, PTO, not changing it, it's just our support staff, it was ambig, ambig, there was ambiguity as to who they should actually contact, and it led to some mistakes, if I'm not going to be here. So that just says also your direct supervisor. Bereavement leave. Bereavement You guys aren't seeing what I'm seeing. Has that been up the whole time like that?
Yes.
Up the whole time?
All right, we got a couple left. Work with me. The bereavement leave is already captured with language, so we know what bereavement leave is. The situation we've encountered is an employee is an employee first year here, and they have a bereavement event, but yet they haven't built up the days, so they can take that time off and not, and still be paid. They haven't built that up. So what this is, is it's just three days that if you qualify for bereavement leave, the district is providing to that employee. Last year, we did something similar with maternity and paternity leave, in which we said, if that's the situation, we're just granting that person 10 days on the district. So I feel this is a great way to help retain some of our employees, granting the three days of bereavement leave.
Granted to all employees, not just?
Yeah, so that was a question. So yeah, first year, second year, there's no way to draw that line.
Yep.
So let's just make it for all of our employees. Also, because that language is already there that classifies what bereavement is, it's not once a year. If you are so unfortunate to have two of these events in one school year, you get to three days each time. The salary matrix that we used to just have a one day a year in which you could advance, this is representing now there's two days a year. September, a lot of the master's programs finish up in the summer, but because of the way schooling has changed over the past five, 10 years, they come at all times of the year. So January 1 and September 1 for those changes. So we'd have a situation where somebody gets their masters in December, and they wouldn't be recognized financially by moving into that lane until August. So this cuts down that wait time. And the last one is nationally board certified teachers. And instead, right now, it's 10 years, that's it. This says five years in district and seven years total. So it reduces that wait time. And we have a couple of staff that are in this situation now to where they have their national boards, but they haven't been with us for 10 years. So I think this is another thing that would help us recruit and retain other staff.
Hopefully attract more nationally board certified teachers.
So the recommendation is to approve the 2425 Employee Handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second. Perfect.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt, to approve the 2425 Handbook as presented. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Betsy, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We adjourned at 7:28 PM. Thank you very much.